So we can call the order at 4:02 PM.
Question, request. I'm getting ready to review a book for a book club. Can I cut and paste stuff from Wikipedia or do I have to copy entire articles?
Uh, can you copy and paste it? Are you planning like putting in a document that you're then going to send out?
No, I'm just taking it as using it to read notes and just.
Okay. Yeah, you can. You should be able to copy and paste information.
Copy and paste and back. Okay, thank you. Wasn't sure if that was legal or if I could do that or whatever. Thank you.
Nope. Book club would fall under fair use. You're not making any money off of it. It's a, it's a discussion.
Yeah.
Analysis and editorial comment is generally.
Thank you.
Covered in fair. Janie, are you gonna take minutes?
Yeah.
Wonderful. Excellent. Beat me to it. Okay. So first item that we have up for discussion then at the meeting today is discussing the minutes of the January 21st meeting of the Building and Grounds Committee. I had sent those out. Are there any questions on the, on the minutes from that meeting? Otherwise, I would look for a motion to approve.
I guess the only thing I was wondering about is that, did you ever find the October 21st, 2020 meeting minutes? I, I don't know how worried we have to be about that, but we never approved them.
I will double check. Thank you for pointing that out.
Yeah, I, if I had gotten on a little sooner, I would have looked myself because I think I probably have them somewhere on file. So I will look for that. Okay. Okay, that was the only thing I noticed.
Okay.
Short of that, I would move to approve.
Do we have a second?
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Next item up for, for business is setting the committee chair. Janie, last year, this was you.
Yeah.
And I know that you're already chair of at least one other committee here. I believe you're HR chair. Is that correct?
Um, yeah, but I'd be happy to do this one too. Yeah, I'd be happy to do it unless Bonnie wants it.
I nominate Janie. As chair of Building and Grounds.
Thank you, Janie.
Thank you.
All in favor of Janie then as a chair?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, and that brings us up to the subject for the meeting today, which is taking a look at the goals for this next year. So the last goals that were, that were set were for the 2019, 2020 fiscal year. May of 2020, it was deemed that things were so up in the air that it would be a challenge to set meaningful goals for the year ahead.
Eric, could you remove the top band and enlarge this?
The top band?
Get rid of the tool band and, or just, oh, there you go. That's better.
Tool bar?
Tool bar. Thank you.
Okay. I think that's an individual screen.
Okay.
Setting, but I can enlarge.
That's great. Thank you.
So the most recent goals then are two years old. So as with the goals that I'm going over with right now with staff, which are in a same similar situation, really, I think the emphasis is on, you know, absolutely taking a look back at the goals that were set, seeing how we did, but first and foremost, looking at the goals that we're going to be setting and moving forward since it's been an interesting year. Leave it to that. The first goal that we had set in 2019 was to complete the assessment of the facilities and the creation of a capital maintenance plan. Work on that was well underway. At the, the next Building and Grounds meeting here, I will have that available as a centerpiece for discussion. Coordinating with Joe Huberty of Engberg Anderson on the development of a renovation plan for phase one. We definitely did that. That was completed in the fall of 2019. And acting as a liaison between the Lake Bluff Public Library Foundation and the library. Yep, absolutely. Even though a lot of what the foundation has aimed to do over the last year has been just staying viable, staying around, letting people know that we're, we still exist and that the needs that the foundation was created to address still exist.
Eric, could, could I get a copy of the fall of 2019 renovation plan? Assuming it's still relevant?
Yes. I will get that sent to you.
Thank you.
I'm just gonna make myself a note here so I don't forget. Any other thoughts on the previous year's goals that we had set? Otherwise, we'll jump on to our next item, which is looking forward to the, the goals that we're going to set.
I think your first one is kind of a no brainer.
Complete the assessment of the facilities and the creation of the capital maintenance plan and timeline with list of contracts and last date. Yep. You know, as noted, there's quite a bit of work that's gone into that, but it hasn't gone to the Building and Grounds Committee for discussion yet. And I think that's a critical next step in that process to ensure that it has all the information and the correct layout to be as useful as possible.
And that was a request of the finance committee that they have a similar goal. And we suggested that the two committees sort of work in tandem and keep each other informed because you know, saving money on projects reflects on the budget and they need to know for a budget planning that they have to do where we're saving money or where we're spending money. So we'll go back and forth on those. I'm on both. So that's actually pretty easy.
Second plan.
It might be worth noting in the document that it's, that the goal is shared with the finance committee. We used to do that a lot of work, like indicate and, and vice versa.
Yeah, that's a great idea. So can we just say along with the finance committee, put that phrase at the beginning of it?
I typed in collaborate with the finance committee, but along with works fine too.
You know what, Janie, to save you time is what I just did on some, another committee. It's just if Eric sends this to you, you can just cut and paste this information.
Yeah, and that's what I've been doing is I update the word doc during, as, as we're discussing, and then I send it out to everybody so that everybody has the updated version. And I think the, the second goal that I put down here was pretty straightforward too, which is we've got the wonderful donation that we've received for the reading slash small meeting room on the main floor. And working with Joe Huberty to plan and schedule that work with that space, I think is an important goal for the year ahead for the Building and Grounds Committee. Generally, the BNG has been the done all the heavy lifting and working through the, the renovation plans and filtering out different ideas and pulling things together. And then I think coordinating with new staff member Melissa Williams on launching the capital campaign. Generally, the Building and Grounds has also been the the entity that's liaised. Caught me off guard.
Caught me off guard, Jim. Sorry.
Um, but generally Building and Grounds has been the entity that's liaised with the foundation and pulled together information that any information that's needed for the campaign to you know, move things forward on the library side of the equation as needed to get that going.
I don't, I don't know Melissa Williams's. Can you?
Yeah, I was just gonna say we, I.
Oh, oh, yes.
Have her title in there?
Um, maybe rather than staff member development coordinator. So you had met Kathy Seibert?
Right.
Kathy had resigned.
Right.
And we were very fortunate that through the grapevine, John Heintlman had referred to him, someone in the community in Lake Bluff, the name of someone who was interested in getting back into some part-time fundraising work who had some really solid experience, prior experience working in that field. So John and Kathy and I as well, and Cal as well, had interviewed Ms. Williams and determined to be a great fit. So she's in the process of getting on board now, working with John to get fully up to speed. But seems like this is gonna be, should be a big help in, in terms of moving us forward. She's very well spoken, very knowledgeable.
Good. And she's local too, right?
Yeah, she's a bluffer.
Yay.
Eric, is that a is that a part-time? When you say part-time, do we know what the hours are if, if the Building and Grounds Committee wants to meet with her? Does she have set hours or how does it work?
Eric, can I jump in?
Yeah, absolutely.
Hey, for starters, I've lost the screen. I don't know why. I just have a thing about Zoom ad here in front of me. I don't think it bails us, but Melissa, I think we, I think we have to be a little careful how we put this up because she's, Bonnie, she's actually an employee of the library. However, she's paid by the foundation and she reports to the foundation, but she liaises with a lot of library staff for all the great talents that we have. And I think when we get more into actually room building kind of thing, she'll be involved with BNG, but I I actually raise is a very good question. I don't quite know where exactly to place her. I don't think, I don't, Eric, I don't see her working on, on a frequent basis with BNG. But I think you and I and Cal actually have to figure out, there's one thing where we kind of fell short with Kathy Seibert is where she did fit in. I don't think sitting down with Building and Grounds is going to be useful to Melissa in the short term of getting to know. She has to learn, Bonnie, all about this database where we're getting information on donors, how to approach donors. She'll be doing, I think, some PR work for us. I see you're working more with Jillian and Martha. She has to have a place to work and a, and functioning and a backup crew, but I don't really see how BNG is going to be useful at this time. So we just want to might look at the, the phrasing of that goal so that it's not misunderstood by the committee or by Melissa. I think what Eric is driving is when, if we get her, when we get around to building something, kind of the connections between the foundation and the board will go through Building and Grounds because that's what's happening to the library. But I think we're a little ahead of the game here in terms of figuring out her exact relationship with the library.
Perhaps instead of coordinate with support?
Well, I don't, I can't see anything on my screen, so.
Oh. Support new development coordinator Melissa Williams on the full launch of a capital campaign.
Yeah.
Can you see it, Janie?
Yeah, Kathy, just try clicking somewhere on your screen to see if you can get rid of that ad. That happened to me sometimes when I inadvertently mouse somewhere where I shouldn't have.
Yeah, it's just no, no, just got another ad. Maybe I should sign up and come back.
Try that.
I mean, I can listen while you guys are talking, but now I'm, now I'm just getting a whole bunch of people doing some stuff. Sorry.
No worries. If, if you want to try signing off, that, that would be okay. That would, I think, most likely remedy the problem.
I can't even figure out how to do that. Oh, I've got it back. All right, I found you.
Okay, we're set. In, in, in terms of quantity, it's part-time at 15 hours a week to, to start with, with the understanding that if the needs of the position change, then the needs, well, the hours would be reevaluated and adjusted. You know, with both the hiring originally with Kathy and then with Melissa, you know, we've made clear that you know, that we're hiring towards what we need in terms of hours and also expecting a lot of flexibility in terms of when available and when those hours will be scheduled. Because you know, a lot of it's gonna end up being interviews and, and meetings and things like that, and those are generally set to you know, when, you know, when people are available. But I, I do think it would probably be worth worth if she could put in an appearance at a Building and Grounds Committee meeting so that Bonnie and Janie could, could meet her.
I thought she was gonna come to a board meeting.
Well, that's true. That would probably supersede.
Yeah, I think at this point, that's, I don't want to overwhelm her with faces on a screen that she's not gonna see up front for a while. I, is she coming to the June 15th meeting? Do you know?
Um, I had talked to her about that previously and I need to confirm it.
Okay, because I think that would be a great introduction to, for everyone. And then I think we just need to sit down and think of the best support that I think all the committees have to give her. But most importantly, the board needs to understand her responsibilities, her function, and how we can support them. I think we're ahead of the ga, the game as far as where she's well, I'm, I'm sure we're gonna talk about the meeting we just had and I sent you guys the notes on this. There's a, we have a long way to go before we start seeing a new room, so I don't want I think I, I don't want Melissa to get lost in the weeds. I think she's a tremendous resource to the library, so I want to make sure that this launch is done really well. So I don't want to make her think that we're asking too much of her too soon.
Indeed. Okay, so suggestions for, for other goals, thoughts, questions on the, the ones I'd put forward as I think some pretty likely goals for the next fiscal year.
What did we, did we decide to reword number three?
Um, I think so. I had changed collaborate with to support new development coordinator.
Support, okay.
You know, get her what she needs to be successful.
Sounds good.
Sort of rather than.
Yeah, that's, that's more.
And let's delete the word full. So on the launch of the capital.
On the launch of capital campaign?
Yeah.
Okay. So now it's support new development coordinator Melissa Williams on the launch of a capital campaign? Or the capital, maybe we should say the capital campaign. Because we already have, I mean, we're talking about, not in general, we have one going already, right?
Sounds good.
Forward. A suggestion for the committee on 2021, 2022 goals. I don't know if you want to include anything about the parking lot remodel. I think that was primarily this fiscal year.
It is though. It's, it's almost done, so I don't know as we would.
Buy it today. All that needs to be done is the striping.
It's beautiful.
And speed bumps, Eric. I, I didn't walk around the back to look.
They did not. But there's, there's no reason we can't circle back to that idea either. I, I think by the time that I, that I asked here was pretty close to the point where Baker and Sons was, was coming out and they had the, they had the mission and plan and they were gung ho.
Yeah, well, I think there are, there are ones that you can, you know, that don't have to be made out of that same asphalt that you can kind of bolt into the.
Yeah, yeah. I think something like that could be. Oh, Kathy, go on.
Either that or talking about signage. I think we have to be aware there's a, a risk here. Eric and I had a conversation with our new village president, Felix Charhut and Charlotte and.
Regis, yeah.
Regis Charlot.
What did I call?
Felix.
Sorry.
Charlot.
Thank you, whatever it was. And Drew Erwin, I got that straight. And I shared that, you know, the, I actually Matt Saudi, I guess, had brought up. I don't know what meeting. I've been to so many meetings lately, but Matt had experienced a car coming across that drive. I don't know if all of you were part of the conversation, but he brought it to my attention that there's traffic from one side of Oak through the library. So we mentioned that to Drew, kind of in a cautionary way, and and Bonnie, I don't want to create any false impressions or, you know, biases, but there've been, you know, there's been conversations between the village and the library that don't always go well. And one of them has to do with our parking lot. So Drew said pretty much verbatim, well, if I can put a public parking lot sign up on the parking lot, we'll, we'll do something about it or we'll do a sign or we'll do a.
Oh, holding us hostage. Okay.
Exactly, exactly. So that ended that conversation. I've thought about it a lot since then because in fact, I had a conversation with Cal Stro today about something else. And she was just saying that she had just been at the, the book drop, right, at that little intersection and that the street was busy with stroller, you know, everybody's out again, which is wonderful. There were bikes, there were strollers, all sorts of stuff. And she said, you know, there's a lot of exposure there to someone speeding through that parking lot entrance. So we may have to go a step further for the the security of the, of the space of the library and the community. And I don't know if we have to apply for a private parking sign or something. I'm sure the village will not go along with that very well, but I think we have to continue our persuasive point of view that it's dangerous and, you know, we can't just ignore that.
We do have a sign up that says it's a private lot.
Is it right at that intersection?
Yeah, it's, it's right at the entrance.
I guess I've looked at it for so long, it doesn't really strike me as.
Yeah, it's maybe some flashing lights or something on it. It's not, it's, it's there, but it's not the most eye popping thing.
I also think that, you know, anyone who's using it as a cut through isn't parking there. They're not violating, if you will, the intended use of the parking lot itself, well, to park. They're not using it to park, they're using it to cut through. And Kathy, I agree with you. I'm worried about the risk. I'm really worried about the safety risk.
What I want to know is what kind of an idiot thinks that's, that's saving them any time to go through there?
Because you can't turn left on Oak. So if you want to get to Scranton, you have to go through the library. Wow. Yeah, I know. It's a, it's a difference of probably 90 seconds or something, but.
Oh, God.
Yeah, so if you want to scoot back down to the post office or something, that's a shortcut. Maybe a no through, through, what is it? Through traffic?
Through traffic.
Yeah. Something. We're just gonna have to really.
No. Anytime, anytime in anytime I'm discussing the parking lot with, with Drew, that yo, it circles back around to that joking, not joking. You know, let's do it if I can make it a public lot. Question on things. So he's, he's free to have his dreams for the space.
Bonnie, this, this issue of public parking in the library lot has come up frequently and most recently, Janie, within the last six months, is that accurate?
Yeah.
And this committee said, no, we do not want to make it open to public. So, so it's.
We've got good reason not to make it open. Not, we're not just being selfish, I don't think at all. So.
No, not by any means.
Eric, my question is if there's already a sign there that says that it's a private lot, what, what prevents us? I mean, why would we have to get approval from the village? I, you know, in businesses like this, I'm, I'm sort of a proponent of, and you know, you smack me upside the head on this, but you know, do it and apologize later if somebody screams about it. Just put below that a sign that says no through, no through traffic. You know, that wouldn't be that hard to do. Just put that up and a couple of speed bumps that are a different color from the black asphalt. And I think that would, you know, those two things are not gonna cost us a lot of money and would go a long ways to mitigating this problem, I think.
No, and I think that's a fair point and I'll take a look at that. I think that might fit in well as a goal. I would also point out to keep in mind for when inevitably the parking question comes up again and we end up having that discussion. The village is in the process of redoing the streetscape in, in downtown. So they're redoing the parking spots, the, the redoing the, the curbs and the curbside features that they've got downtown. Actually, it's gonna look really nice. They've got some string lighting that they're gonna put in there. It's gonna be nice. For the purposes of this discussion, worth noting is that their plan for redoing it, they're going to have one fewer parking space than they currently have. So they're losing parking.
While I cry.
But you know, prob- you know, probably worth pointing out at some point that, you know, when this inevitably circles, conversation circles back around that you know, if parking is really that desperate, then you know, why was the village, you know, opting to give up rather than go with one of the other options on the table, which would have increased parking?
Perhaps they're taking seriously the Building and Grounds recommendation in 2019, I guess, that they acquire the building and process it from the library and build a parking lot.
That would be well, that would be a good idea. I'd love to see him.
I'd love to see something happen over there.
Something there.
Well, actually, Janie, that came up and, and, and Bonnie, this again is just more history of the building stuff. That actually came up in our conversation with at the village president. And we asked Drew, let's see, the Weilers who own the building were the, the neighbors to the south of the library. They sold their house and moved to France, but they still own the building. And Drew said they are not in any there's, they don't feel any pressure to sell or to get rid of it. They apparently seem committed to sell it as residential. However, Regis, is that his name? Regis? Yeah, I've got, Regis filled in in my head. Regis said.
That's what you should think.
Regis said, or else Drew said, with, with the new faces on the village board, he wouldn't be surprised if the focus of residential development downtown changed. That's the interpret, interpretation I heard, Eric.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I, I've, I've heard similar sorts of talk, you know.
You know, and, and so it's all kind of, there's no decisions, you know. But to the point of the sign, I actually, a neighbor of mine was talking about something totally unrelated, but he, he had a great phrase. He said, I'm gonna plead total innocence and then beg for mercy. I thought, well, that's a great way to get around something. I thought, well, that's a great way to get around something. So perhaps if we put a sign up, we can just say, oh, who knew? And we're really sorry, you know, and there's our sign. So that's, that's one strategy.
Right. That worked well for me.
Yeah, I, I would also think, you know, based on this conversation, it sounds like this. You know, parking issue might be worth the intergovernmental committee talking about, putting on their agenda. Um, you know, again, I, I live very close to the library, like a block and a half away and. When the farmer's market opened on Friday, I was kind of like, oh, that's right. There's all this street parking now. People park on my, on the street in the residential area near my house. It would be great if. The village could lease, even just lease a parking lot of that building during the summer. To accommodate for the parade, the cycle thing, the, the farmer's market. I mean, there's so many things that happen, which is one of the reasons. We all love living here, right? So many things that happen in the summer. It would just be great.
That's a great.
Maybe it's not a purchase, maybe you start, start small and just lease it.
Well, that's great because it gets it off the, it's always been a, a little tennis ball going between. Eric and Drew Erwin. So that would get the conversation to a few other faces. And the museum, I think, would agree with our point of view about. When their people come and, you know, traffic and Fridays is a huge example. Lunchtime and Fridays are crazy in, in downtown Lake Bluff. We're all going to be. Positively reminded of that in the next few months because it hasn't been for a year and a half. But all of a sudden, like, whoa, it really is. So great idea, Bonnie. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, is a goal, I put it down as identify and implement ways to minimize usage of the library parking lot is a cut through. From Oak Avenue to Scranton Avenue.
Can you put in there something with intergovernmental?
I don't know if that's really a goal that we should.
To coordinate with that. Well, we're, we're.
To coordinate with IGA, maybe?
Or how about to prevent usage of the library parking lot as a cut through?
Another quick question. So like I noticed today, when I stopped by the library, the. History museum was open. So is it first come, first serve among library staff and history museum? Staff or volunteers in terms of the parking that we have?
Nope. Um, it's, it's our parking lot. The, the lease doesn't actually provide for them to have any parking. Uh, so when, when we've got evening and weekend hours. And there aren't many staff in the building that we. Have designated that they can have a spot or two at those times. But otherwise it's for library staff.
And we just, we have a net increase of one spot now, right?
Yep.
Great. Well, Eric, do you, how do you feel about involving intergovernmental? Do you think that would open up a third party?
Um. Well, I've been spinning that in my, in my head here is after you mentioned and. Uh, I, I think the unequal, the usage of, of that lot might. Uh, make that more of a challenging conversation. I, I know that the, the museum would. I mean, they, they would like to make a lot of use of that parking lot that.
Yeah.
They've made requests, you know, to get a garage back there to have their ice truck and lots of different things. So. That, that might end up being the sticking point with the, the museum, since I think their focus would chiefly be. Let us use your lot.
Then it might be too many irons in the fire.
I'm sorry, Kathy, what was it you asked? I, I missed that.
Um, I was asking Eric his opinion of including. Inter, by a goal number four of it.
Right.
Using the intergovernmental agreement committee as a conduit for discussion. That could backfire basically. I think, you know, we're thinking this, we're kind of brainstorming this.
Well, get sidetracked.
Yeah.
I think would probably be because I think the museum, museum's chief interest is just that they would. You know, they, they would like to have a chunk of that lot really set aside for them.
Which are you talking about the? Over behind the north of the library or north of the post office? So what you're talking about?
No, behind the library.
Oh, okay. No, I, I've never heard, I have never heard anybody say that. They felt on the history museum, say they felt that we needed, the history museum needed to have parking spots or anything like that. I think a lot of.
Oh, really?
Who come in there. Yeah, it's never been an issue that I'm aware of.
Okay. Most, because Kathy McKechnie's, Kathy McKechnie then is, is taken. Taken some initiative because I've gotten multiple requests from her in recent years. Um, to have parking back there.
Really?
Yeah.
I, I've never heard anybody bring it up at a board meeting ever. So.
I do remember discussing pulling a shed, but.
Yep.
There was, yeah, there was that. There, yeah, there was that and that got mixed pretty fast, but now. We're sort of, the, the history museum is sort of in. The process of using that property north of the post office. To. To renovate the interior so that it can accommodate the ice truck. Is of course going to be way more money than we expected it to be. And everybody's kind of choking on that right now.
Is there a garage there then?
What? Well, it's just pretty much a big open space and, and to really have it be someplace that would protect the truck. As, as we would like to have it be protected, it would require. Some work and so that, that's sort of a. In the midst of it project right now, too.
That's pretty nice on the part of the village. Is that an agreement? Is that a lease?
It's not a lease yet. It's, it's not, it's not a lease and the village does use it right now for storage. I mean, that's where they put all the. You know. What do you call those? They, they put all the traffic cones and stuff like that for all the events they hold uptown. Those sawhorses and that kind of stuff goes in there. So. Yeah, it, it's work in progress, definitely.
So maybe I, I think I was the first person to mention the intergovernmental agreement committee and I didn't necessarily. Suggest that to tie specifically to the. Library parking lot. I think it's just maybe. If, if the intergovernmental agreement committee is our voice to the village. Or maybe it's through you, Eric and you, Kathy, just, you know, hey. There's a lot of, there's a fair amount of surface space over there for that building that I guess the Weilers own. Is there a way we can make downtown Lake Bluff a little more safe? By short term leasing that surface lot?
I have said that same thing many times.
Yeah.
Saying it again, just trying, we have tried the right voice to do it in.
Yeah.
And I do think with a new, you know. Village board and trustees, it's, this is the time to be speaking up and.
You're right. You're absolutely right.
Yeah. The.
So I would, for the goal itself, I would actually strike this coordinate with the, because the library, the, the parking lot's ours to deal with, right?
Right.
Okay.
Yep, yep.
To prevent usage.
Yeah.
I think that's, okay, that's where we are right now.
Yeah. Um, in, in terms of when we need to, you know, get ahold of something with the, with the, the village that's. You know, it's me reaching out to Drew or it's Kathy reaching out to her counterpart as the village president. Uh, the intergovernmental agreement committee is, is really focused on. Us talking to the museum.
Okay.
And then the, the village sends a representative who's mostly there as a moderator. Well, I. It's technically a three party board, but Janie, you can attest to that, to the truth of that, that. We don't always get along with our museum friends as, as well as we should or would like.
We get along.
We get on much better these days.
Yeah. I don't really see that as obstacles at all anymore.
No, which is a good thing. Um, okay, so we've got four possible goals listed for. Uh, the fiscal year. Do we have any ideas for another goal? Generally, I think the, the goal has been two to five. And don't go over.
Is there any looming building issue maintenance wise, you know, replacement wise, breaking what that we are unaware of that we should be discussing?
Good question.
Not at the moment.
No, but I mean, I realize now the toilet's going to overflow, but in terms of real chronic issue that. Like we knew the roof was happening kind of thing.
No. Uh, fingers crossed.
Yeah.
You know, really, you know, getting the, the parking lot tackled, that was one of the. Uh, last. Proverbial albatrosses that we had there that was. Those. Long term building projects we needed to get squared away. So really isn't anything. You know, that's looming as a chronic issue right now, and I will definitely let you know. Uh, the moment that one inevitably appears.
No, I, I just sort of feel like we've done. Quite a bit to the physical plant in the last. Five years or so that, that was, you know, needed maintenance and it. In pretty good shape now.
Yeah, I, I mean, the, the, the chief issue that the building has in, in general is just that. It's a 50 year old building, getting close to being a 50 year old building. Within the next couple of years and. You know. Maintenance on that is going to be, maintenance is going to be higher.
Changes will be under the purview of the HPC, which I'm also on.
Oh, bliss. I, I cannot wait for our historical designation.
When does that roll in?
Well, it'll be what, 2025?
Yep.
So at 50 years, you're historically recognized?
Well, after, once a building is 50 years old. If there are going to be significant changes and or demolition, it has to come before the historic preservation commission.
Oh, Lord, it's one more thing to worry about.
But I, it's, it's honestly, Kathy, I don't think it'll be something to worry about. Because, you know.
Does that affect public buildings?
What's that?
That, that includes public buildings?
Yeah, it includes any structure in Lake Bluff.
Because it, it definitely includes a train station in a big way.
Remember that.
Yeah. Uh, but we've got somebody on the inside.
We do.
Yeah.
Well, Janie, why don't you become chairman of that committee just to be?
Uh, see.
No, I do not want to be chairman of that committee.
Janie's, Janie's too good an egg, though she'd recuse herself. If we were ever at before the committee.
But she could tell us what's going on.
That's true.
Nonetheless, we will talk about that when the time comes. So.
Indeed.
No, it sounds like, it sounds like we are, we're aware of any issues or actually, we don't seem to be aware of any issues. And we're in good stead and we. There's no. There's no project that we're out there bidding on and knowing that has to happen in the next 12 months.
Yep.
Okay.
I don't know about you, but I, I think these, these four. Sound really good and appropriate for the position for where we are right now, which is what they're supposed to be for this. Upcoming year. I, I'm happy with them the way they are written right now.
Yeah, I am too. I actually think that number one is going to be. Not a lot of work, but it's, it'll, it'll step by step and, and the purpose of number one and the coordination with finance really is. We're looking very carefully at the budget and where we can tighten things a little bit. And Eric was pointing out with. The continuation of some contracts, we're able to get discounts. And so we want to take advantage of what, what is available. And then, you know, where new contracts are preferred, make sure that they're cost effective. So there's. There's a lot that's going to be going on there.
Yeah. Once again, that's, that's going to be a lot of work for probably you and Lindy, right?
Yeah, though I think a lot of it is just gathering information that we have together. And collocating it, bringing it all in one place.
Sounds good. Sounds like we have our four goals.
I think so.
Indeed.
So, so. Is there anything else that we need to? Need to discuss? Any and all other business? I think of any.
If not, then we, if not, then we need a motion to adjourn.
I so move.
Bonnie, go for it.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi.
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 Meeting is adjourned.
All right, guys. Thank you so much.
It is.
Thank you.
Forty eight.
Forty eight.
Take care, everybody.
Thanks a lot. See you all soon.
Next week.
See you next Tuesday.